Good evening, welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
(audience clapping) The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First we have our guest speaker, Casey. Actually, you need to turn it this way and address the Board of Supervisors.
So I'm going to address the Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Grove, you need to turn it and face the Board of Supervisors. You are to address the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, I'll address you.
Turn it and face the Board of Supervisors.
So, okay, so we're going to be able, am I going to be able to talk about?
If you would like to speak, you need to turn and face the Board of Supervisors.
So I'm reporting to the taxpayers tonight despite Carrie's disapproval of that. I'm an elected peace officer of this township, constable with an oath to defend the Constitution. I have a website, constabgrove.com, a Facebook page, and I've been asked to keep this limited in time so I can address any questions that anybody may have afterwards. The purpose of this is just to kind of keep the taxpayers up to speed on things that I've been doing. First things that I did was started to write some resolutions which are position statements. The first one is the safeguard of landowner property rights, and that supports your right to not allow anyone access to your private property without a warrant or probable cause. For instance, I sent the Board recently an open letter about an ordinance that's pretty old, it's maybe 12, 14 years old, and it basically establishes a privilege, this is under Chapter 4, Section 219, I believe, basically gives them the privilege to come onto our private property without a warrant and to inspect for violations. It's pretty unrestricted, and I think it does violate our Fourth Amendment, which says that we have the right to be secure without these kind of warrantless intrusions. Second thing I did was a position statement saying that I respect your right to bear arms. That includes firearms, ammunition, any sort of accessories. That's in accordance with the Second Amendment. Third thing I did was to proclaim that I would have a transparent position, and in doing so, I put a lot of my records and related records on my website, constabgrove.com. In May, I served in the primary election, and constables are actually mandated by law to be at the polls where the only type of law enforcement is permitted there unless, you know, a cop is bogan or called by the election judge. And that's about a 16-hour day. It goes from the first cast vote until all the votes have been counted. Constables do receive $85 from the county for that service. I did ask them not to send me a check. They sent a check anyways, as God knows I donated that $85 to the town. And if you add that up over the course of this four-year term which I'm serving, that will be $700 in donations to the fire company. So that's one of the things that this constable position, as it's been not utilized at all, could be filtering money back into the township. There was only one instance of a potential incident that took place, which was a candidate was asking voters outside of the poll what their political party was, and a voter came in discouraged with that. The election judge handled that swiftly. In May, I came up with an award for Penns Valley's graduating seniors. It's titled the Bill of Rights Award. They have to write an essay, apply for it, and the winner this year was a young lady by the name of Emma Latchett, and I think her essay made a really good point, you know, this thing where we talk about everybody's rights and we talk about how we don't like it. One person exercises their rights, but the importance of her essay was establishing that all of our rights are important, and it's kind of a domino effect when rights are starting to be stripped away. In August, I participated in the fire company parade. My family and I tossed a bunch of candy, pounds and pounds of it, and we handed out about 50 pocket constitutions. Also, in May and June, I issued a first public service announcement, which is a short video. It's about a minute and 30 seconds, and it's available on my website. Also, accepted invitation to sit in a dump tank, which was a lot of fun there at the carnival, and I think that would be something that maybe you guys could be a little better sports next year, jump in a dump tank and take a bath. So in the future, what should you expect from me? More PSAs, we'll make more videos, and also plan to go through with the certification, which I think is really going to take this position to the next level. So again, thanks for the opportunity to speak, and it was probably difficult for me to speak, and appreciate everybody listening.
Move on to public comment versus Carol.
I'm Carol McNichens. Thanks for turning this the way it's supposed to be, Casey. That was nice of you. I urge you, Doug, Charles, and Carrie that you insist that this dog and pony show be stopped. Is it, what are we up to, 140, 140 right to no request? That's insane. And that now it's a school, Center Hill Borough, oh, where's it going in? I mean, this is, you've got to stop it. And why do we have the resolution for video if you're not enforcing her to sit to the back of the room? Why, why aren't you enforcing it as supervisors? It should be done. This dog and pony show has just got to hang. Thank you.
Next is Pat.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, thank you for this opportunity. Pat, as you are aware, the Penns Valley EMS has a structural deficit which is basically mandated by law. After the last set of national and state elections, it was painfully obvious that there was going to be no help from Washington or Harrisburg as far as the helping the neighborhood stay afloat. About 60% of the business we get at Penns Valley EMS is Medicare, Medicaid, which pay about 30% for one eighth, or 12% of like the cost to maintain it during an ambulance. From what I understand, the municipalities have donated somewhere in the neighborhood $115, $120,000 for this year's, which helps close the budget gap, which we wanted $150, $36,000. Currently, there are several municipalities in the valley who have instituted a local service tax, which if anybody attended the meeting until June 19th about that, the best that can do is maybe $40,000 if everybody in the valley instituted such a tax. The only mechanism, and of course, that, only 25% of that is mandated by law to go to emergency services, so that might be about $10,000 to cover a $60,000 deficit. The only mechanism Pennsylvania has to guarantee funding to keep the rural ambulance service going, of course, is a real estate tax. That's only taxed with the legislature gives to local municipalities to increase. Hopefully, Great Township will before November enact such a tax. I'm willing to pay it because we need ambulance service, and we cannot depend upon donation from municipalities for something they're mandated by law to provide. And hopefully, Great Township will step up and provide the leadership they provided over the years, back 100 years ago. People were running into training in Great Township because we had the high school. We have the only community center in central Pennsylvania. We have been a leader, and I hope that this Board will take the steps to lead this valley into a future with ambulance service, which will be there in the future. Thanks very much. I've got to go with my chickens now.
Thanks. Next, Michelle.
We are a board collectively, meaning each one of us has the same equal amount of vote. Things can't just be passed without the whole board voting on it. So if any member, so any member that comes onto this board, they cannot do anything themselves outside of this board. Decisions can't be made by that person, and actions cannot be taken by that person. Carrie Miller said this to me on February 7th last year at an Old Greg's School Advisory Board meeting. On January 2nd of this year, she surprised us with a detailed plan to dissolve that board on the spot. It was Solicitor Gaines who suggested tableing it. On the agenda for tonight's meeting, you will notice the township has recently appealed two final determinations by the Office of Open Records, bringing the issues into the Court of Common Pleas. In both cases, the final determination of the OR and petition for review were filed in between regular meetings of the Board of Supervisors, who made the decision to appeal these final determinations. The decision to appeal the final determination regarding surveillance footage I requested back in 2016 was voted on in a public meeting last year, I think it was April. So what has changed since last year? I won this footage on June 25th without a lawyer from the Commonwealth Court, yet the township has repeatedly refused to give it to me. This week, I asked for it on three different days. I've also been trying to obtain other records that were granted and not provided. Some of these records go back as far as March of last year that were granted by the OR. Jennifer Snyder, Carrie Miller, and Doug Fairley have all told me no when I asked for these records. Supervisor Miller has made the office an even more hostile environment for me than it ever was before, yelling loudly that I'm harassing her employees by asking for these long overdue records that I'm legally entitled to. I told her I was not there to talk to her, that I was not talking to her, and that I will see her in this meeting, and she continued to yell until I left. The security footage is regarding a secret meeting that took place in the office in December of 2016. I was in the hall, so I heard the discussion and the decisions being made by Doug Fairley, Jill Myers, and the secretary, and possibly others. Now we have two supervisors working in the office. Decisions are being made outside of public meetings. The township spends thousands of dollars litigating my requests, then simply ignores the result when they lose. At this point, there is no other legal remedy to obtain these records, which there are many of them, than to take the township to court. I just want to add one more thing. About five minutes before the meeting started, I got this from David Gaines. And so this could, this could be the security footage that I requested in December of 2016 and won in June of this year. If it is, I will let everyone know on Facebook once I review it. Thank you for your time.
Next, Thompson. Can you say your name and where you're located?
As you may already know, because your employees have Googled me, I am the man, the myth, the legend, Hobson the Count from Ferguson Township in Center County. Desire to own property, as I had stated at the February 8, 2018 meeting, here in Great Township. Before, on, or after that date, Great Township employee or employees decided to spend time, or at least computer resources of the township, to Google my name. And as I understand from reviewing records and coming to a meeting and doing other background investigation, there are certainly many duties under state law for which compliance is demanded of this township, for which that time might have been better spent complying with that law instead of spending time Googling people. And I'm not the only person who's been Googling. Now, if members of your township are spending time on potentially frivolous activities in the face of duties under state law, it might be appropriate to audit these activities because the cost of not doing so and correcting that behavior is the cost of suffering civil penalties, attorney's fees, and penalty on a per-day basis for failure to comply with court orders under the Pennsylvania right to no law. That is an act of assembly from our state legislature. It's not something that this municipality can choose to ignore at any time. It's not something that a stop can be put to for the financial convenience or other convenience of the municipality. In what I, in my wish to acquire property in this township, it's not, I don't want to end up with property with a township that's fearing towards bankruptcy because they are hit with civil penalties, attorney's fees, penalties for not complying with orders and so on. It's important that there is a liquid township that remains that way so that it can do its I'm not bothered that someone would want to know who I am. I know that's just a neighborly thing to do. But if it's done on township resources at the expense of complying with acts of the General Assembly, there needs to be a review of what's going on because when I acquire that property in Great Township, I want there to continue to be a solid township available so that it's, someone else doesn't have to become its master. Thank you for your time.
End of the public comment period. We'll move on to liaison reports. First Solicitor report. Emergency management coordinator, Don's not here. I know Don was busy with all the flooding. He's driving around a lot and checking all the creeks. Great Township Fire Company.
During the recent flooding, we pumped one basement. That's pretty awesome. Pretty much people knew how to live when it happened. We were approved for a DCNR grant. We are going to purchase wild land firefighting equipment for that. Our stuff is really old and really deteriorated. I think we're getting six, six wild land jumpsuits and helmets. Today, I found out that we were approved for a FEMA grant. We will be buying brand-new MSA air packs. They are very expensive, about $8,000 a piece. We're probably going to be, end up paying somewhere between 10% and 15% of that cost, which is pretty nice because our air packs are just about to run out, and if we didn't have this grant, then I'm not sure how we would be breathing inside a house fire. We're still looking at auctions for our rescue vehicle. As you know, it was overweight, so I had our guys unload it, and we have specifically just rescue equipment on there, no one used for firefighting. There was discrepancy with the door tag on it. We're trying to get through that with Chevrolet and the body filter toing. We need to do something with the front truck shed on our building out by the flagpole was falling down. I was in talks with some contractors who said they'd be around, and they never came around. So right now, I'm in the midst of contacting our local guys, Chris Coons, guys like that, see if they can help us out, get us some sort of place, and then I think what we're probably going to have to do is try to find a grant somewhere to help us pay for that. Hopefully, they'll give us a deal on that. Active membership is growing pretty well. Since last October, we've more than doubled it. I'd like to thank the supervisor again for purchasing our carnival tickets. That was the best carnival we've had in years, so that's excellent. I'm happy about that. I'm going to change, all of our boxes are set up by numbers, like Penns Valley, Bones Supply, and Medical Center, that's our 720 box. So if they page us out and they say box 720, we know where we're going. We had a motorcyclist down way back on Old Stand Mountain Road over the weekend, last weekend, and he was a cardiac patient, and his bike was down, and he was on Old Stand Mountain Road, which is basically a little less than a sidewalk for a path. That box was not set up for that rescue. Everything up that way is a 740 box, so, or down that way. I'm going to make everything from Lower Georges, Beneath Gap area, up the mountain, and over the other side, a little, I don't know, thousand-foot stretch of Great Township. That's going to be our 750 box, so I can get the correct equipment on there for this type of thing, side-by-sides, four-wheelers, snowmobiles, whatever we need, depending on what time of year it is. I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Would the Board of Supervisors consider for the fire police, three dozen traffic cones? We don't have any that are legal, is that correct?
Right, we have old green ones that are not legal. We need 36-inch orange ones with the red duct tape on them.
I have no idea at this point. I mean, where do you folks buy yours?
We don't. Just the only ones from the order. Radco, Asim, anybody, US Municipal.
And maybe you might be able to get a better deal than we can. I don't know.
I can call if they want to.
I guess we can, why don't we, we can each price them, and then we'll see what he gets and see what we get.
I got one price, but I thought it was ridiculous. It was like $15.60 a piece. That just didn't seem enough to me, but I may have wrong.
Did you say a number?
Three dozen. What they'll do then is divide them up amongst the members, and they will keep them in their personal vehicle.
The fire police, yeah.
I think we can get prices and then make a decision next year.
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Old Greg's School, the Library Board Report.
We don't have a whole lot, other than the pump and the fountain has stopped working, but we are getting another one, but we're not going to have it installed till spring just because of the weather. The other thing, we are hoping to have the policy manual completed within the month so I can be hopefully voting on. And our craft fair is moving along wonderfully. I believe last year, we had 40 or 41 vendors, and this year, so far, we already have 21 confirmed vendors, which I think is great. And we are going to have Santa Claus this year. Going to try something a little bit different. Going to have music still, but going to have Santa Claus and instead maybe get some kids pictures taken, what have you. We're still looking for a stove, and I have been in contact with Mike's Appliances and Video. We may be able to work something with them besides the one, I think, W. Altoona? Oh, is that Charles?
Yeah, I said Altoona would be a good place to look.
And the only other thing we have, we are still looking for two or three additional members.
Just to add to your comments, Jim has access to that pump. I need to get the bill to the secretary, which it was $135.
Okay, so a little less than the last time, isn't it?
Nope, just a little bit more.
Is it more? That's all I have. Anybody have any questions?
I have none.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. So at this time, we'll do, we'll work through these. Last month, they brought to us about PCO room renovations. We need to make a motion to approve or deny that. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the renovations.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
No, I'm here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. And then we also have a revised rental contract. The Old Greg's School Board approved it. This is what when people rent space. David had also reviewed it, so we just need approval for that so we can start using the new rental.
I'll make that motion. I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimous. We also have the PCO lease. We also have a PCO lease.
Yes, we have a PCO lease here. This lease is a revised lease. It's a much more extreme one than the previous one. Dave has looked at it and said it's okay. I've read it. I don't see any issues with it, other than PCO has asked for a first right of refusal on any rooms that haven't become available on the second floor, and I believe we want to do, go with just one room where they can have first right of refusal. We, the advisory board is on the same page with that.
Yeah, we were.
So would you like to look at this?
When you're ready, I'll entertain a motion.
I believe briefly I've gone over this before, so I'll make the motion.
I will second the motion.
Any further discussion?
I'm here.
All those in favor to approve the revised rental PCO lease with the change of one room?
First, first room available.
First right of refusal on the next one room available. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. That is it for that physical plant manager's report.
Yeah, I was concerned on Monday about rising water. When it gets too high, it actually backs up through the drains in the basement floor into the boiler room, and so we had the pump revving, and then they're looking at it, but it never, it never came up that hot, so next week might be a different story. The locks on the second floor are being rekeyed. Every room that PCO is renting is being rekeyed, and we had a few locks downstairs rekeyed on the thrift shop and one lock upstairs, the insurance office. That's all I have.
Operations Manager Report.
I'm working on the policy manual. I gave it to the Old Greg's School Board to read over and make some changes before the next meeting so that they can vote on that. The building's been reserved quite heavily. It's going to be getting worse as fall starts. It's our busy time of year. Let's see, the youth center has switched from Wednesday night to Thursday night, so that's probably why parking was a little bit harder tonight. We're going to have that conflict. They noticed they down on that end of the building, but if it gets noisy, we'll just have to shut the door. There's a couple of, there's a, besides the craft fair that Carol talked about, there's a fiber festival. It's going to take place all day, one Saturday, and I think it's in October. And the Little League basketball start using the gym in the next, in November, so we have, it's starting to fill up in that. We have a new fitness instructor that's teaching on Tuesday nights and Thursday mornings, a stroller, mom and stroller class on, I think, Thursday mornings, so.
Move on to Penns Valley Code Enforcement Agency.
Really nothing to add. I had a week where I was off work for a while, but we issued 193 furniture to date, and that's pretty much it. I do have to attend another meeting after leaving in a few minutes. Is there anything you guys have for me?
I do have two things that I'd like to ask. One is a request, if you could copy us on correspondence sent to residents, like when you send them letters when they're in violation of something, if you could copy the township so we're aware.
Just violations of our, of our correspondence?
Just violations of our, of our correspondence?
Anything that's, I would think violations, that's gonna affect, that could have potential to affect the township as a whole. And the other one is, just to clarify, we've had some confusion amongst us. Do you accept, how do you accept complaints? Formal only, or?
In writing only.
In writing?
I mean, if it's a building code violation, we have to, we're obligated to follow up. If it is like a loan complaint, your policy always says to admit it's either in writing or an email from the supervisor.
That's what's all I have. In writing, I'm sorry, you said a lot, in writing or what?
Or I've done it on emails from the supervisor.
Thank you. Penns Valley EMS, Lindsay couldn't be here tonight. She sent me her reports. She said the membership campaign for the EMS begins on October first. Watch your mailboxes for this year's revitalized membership pamphlet. You will also notice signs throughout the valley, in particular outside PV EMS, where we will be tracking the number of memberships purchased. Our goal is three thousand memberships this year. In years past, we've averaged around fifteen hundred. With this increase, we hope to make PV EMS most sustainable. This year's pamphlet also aims to succinctly inform you and your family what the PV EMS membership does for you, PV EMS and your Penns Valley community as a whole. We will be at Burke holders during the October weekends advertising the memberships and you can always purchase online. Their fall/winter fundraiser will revolve around a day for children, pets and families to meet Santa, enjoy some goodies and have their Christmas presents wrapped by our volunteer members of the PV EMS auxiliary. Date to be determined and more details coming soon. Penns Valley Regional Plant Commission.
The Penns Valley Regional Plant Commission will meet this Monday, September seventeenth, in this room at seven PM. One of the, the major item on the agenda is review of the comprehensive plan.
Planning Commission.
We didn't meet this past month.
Tri Municipal Park.
Just a couple of things I'll update. We had groundbreaking in August. And waiver they're not in full rain, things have moved forward. The basin is basically constructed as keeping all that water that came from under the road and up, the springs and so forth. Keeping that water in that area, so that's helped a lot with the rest of the, of the area. So we are going to have a, I'm not sure what we're gonna call it, but we're gonna have a-
Media Day.
A media day, okay. But we really didn't have media at the groundbreaking ceremony. So that's gonna be the twenty-seventh, two weeks from thir, two weeks from today. At twelve o'clock, and we're gonna try to get the media there. And we also wanna get the, the organizations that are helping to fund the park there. And there's now a picnic table up there at the top, so you can sit down there, have a snack, watch the dust, not the dust fly, but watch the work there. And so we're very pleased with what we think you're doing.
Hey Joel, while you're there, I think it makes sense, since it's not on the agenda otherwise, to get supervisors to sign several agreements to help with the closing of the loan on the park, at least one of them, the Penn Best one. The first document I have is an easement agreement. The easement agreement essentially gives the park the right to use the property. The property is co-owned by the three municipalities. For the loan to go through Penn Best, the lending entity wants to make sure that there's something in writing saying the park can use the property. Seems pretty easy, but that would be the first motion. Second motion's a promissory note. Because of the status of the park a while back, the township took out a fifty thousand dollar non-revolting line of credit. It's unclear whether the park, or to what extent the park might need to use that, that it's for the park, it's not for any other purpose. The promissory note says that the park will pay back the township for any funds expended as part of that line of credit. Reimbursement Agreement is the third agreement for document to sign. Reimbursement Agreement says that it's essentially a guarantee. If the park can't pay the loan proceeds, then, then Greg, Greg Township will be responsible for a third of the money. And I think we should take a fourth motion to essentially do any other, any and all other activities or tasks that might be necessary for the closing. Right now I think this is it. Continue to have conversations with Penn Best and everybody in case something comes up on Monday or what have you in advance of this closing. We need to have something on the books that gives us the authority to do so. So the first motion would be to sign the easement agreement with the park.
Is there a motion to sign the easement agreement?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
None.
Thank you. Second motion is the promissory note and loan agreement.
Question on that?
Yes.
If that's giving the tri-park permission to utilize the line of credit, they have to first come to the municipalities to get permission for whatever that is, correct? They can't just-
Yeah, I mean, the, the line of credit's in your name, so you don't have to do anything really, but this says if, if you do give the money, they have to pay it back.
Entertain a motion to approve the, say that word, promissory?
Promissory note.
Promissory.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
No, I'm here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
Third is a reimbursement agreement. It's essentially a guarantee of, of the loan.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the reimbursement agreement.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Fourth is to take any actions that might be required to assist with the closing of this loan.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, motion carries unanimous.
Thank you. The closing's on the twenty-fifth.
Closing on the twenty-fifth, we really need to thank David for all the work he's done. I know he was on the road the other day and he managed to get into our teleconference at four, three o'clock, I guess it was. And there's just been so much things that we did not expect. So he's done a real good job of keeping us where we wanna be. Just for your information too, we're working on that insurance. Actually, Potter has called their insurance people and it's gotta be, Tri Municipal Court, cash recovered, they wanna separate policy, so that's being taken care of this weekend. So we have to have everything done or the closing gets delayed, which in essence is gonna delay reimbursement for construction, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Water and sewer authority, Gil Morris and Sanchez Report. Water Authority, no new business. There was an update on leak detection along Route forty-five right away. Sewer Authority, no new business. Since the meeting, there was a report from the plant manager concerning the recent rains totaling four point nine inches. The plant ran at increased capacity and processing time was monitored. The plant was also able to handle the extra flow. We'll move on to Secretary Treasurer's report. I'll entertain a motion to approve the August ninth, two thousand eighteen Board of Supervisors meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. I'll entertain a motion to accept the all funds financial report.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second here.
Any further discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
Just so you know, we, we went down. From last month, I think we had nine hundred thousand. It's a, to bottom line, we're at five eighty-nine, but that's because we paid for a lot of road projects. So that's, I mean, it was a big jump from one, I think it was two hundred and some thousand dollars. Yeah. So our roads are good.
Interest rate policy.
I mean, David talked to me about it. What did you say? We should charge six, I think we should make a motion to charge six percent interest if we, I'm just, we don't have anything to charge interest for at the moment. But at, but we're, the way the sewer, Jeff Greer used to get all the checks and, you know, just turn in the checks and we would pay him. Laren has, and when we signed his, when he gave us his thing at the beginning of the year, and he's done it some, some way and some another way, but he's turned in invoices that we then in turn invoice these people. And if they don't reimburse us, I just want a interest rate that be, it's a concern. So if we wanna make a motion for six percent, that would be great.
I would make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Anything else on your Secretary Treasurer's report? Right to know report?
It's a self-explanatory.
We did also-
It was last updated on the eleven.
Yeah, it was last updated on the, the eleven. We have since received another right to know request and just five more appeals this afternoon. I also would like to make a comment regarding the security footage that the court ordered for us to turn over. We did turn over that footage today, but we're gonna have discussions on what that means for the security of the building moving forward. We'll need to discuss getting another security audit done on the building and making whatever changes we need to, to the security cameras in order to be able to continue to provide the same security to people that use this building. So that would be an additional cost to the taxpayers in order for us to make sure we keep providing what was recommended from the state police and the sheriff's office. That will be additional funds we need to discuss and we'll do budget.
Yeah, I think at least we need to have a security redone.
So you said about contacting the sheriff's office to find out what their recommendations are in terms of next steps for that? Any further discussion on that, or?
I am not at this point.
Yeah, we'll see what the security audit says.
Do you wanna make, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that you said contact the sheriff's office and investigate another security audit. I wanted to see where our weaknesses are.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Roadmaster's Report.
Okay, since last month, obviously, it's been a little bit wet. We've been dealing with floodwater issues, stones. We finished the Blue Bowl project. We got the guardrails installed that we got a grant for, so that's pretty much buttoned up. I think we're gonna wait on the Beneath Gap project. We have till spring. It's too wet. People who need to be involved with it as well are backed up just as well as we are. We have till early spring, or late spring, early summer to do that, so I think we're just gonna wait on that. We've been trying to do the best we can fixing up some burns here and there in between rain. Since, yeah, since the last meeting, we had a resident call in and say that there were some more signs stolen. So obviously the only thing that we could do about that is take half hour, whatever on the phone to talk to the state police and get them there and they did an investigation. There's a hearing impaired child sign taken and two watch children signs taken. Brush Mountain, Brush Valley area. Haven't heard anything from that yet. The one person that had the one, that requested to have the sign put up in the first place was wondering on who was gonna purchase that sign, whether it's us or them. And since I've been here, there's kind of a gray area there. Sometimes like the driveways, the township buys it the first time and then it's up to the landowner from there on after. Well, I think it should be that way, I mean, if it's a specialty sign other than the, you know, driveway name, it should be up to the landowner or the person requesting it all the time, but there is no policy or anything. I'm not one for more rules, but I think there needs to be something, so what's good for one is good for everybody. So I think you guys need to come up with something stating some facts here and what we're gonna do with this situation.
Oh, Spencer was that sign written?
Well, the signs are forty-nine ninety a piece plus posts, you owe that a hundred, owe it a hundred bucks.
It's hard for me because when they call me and talk to me about it, we don't really have anything in writing. And so, you know, like what you've said, driveways, it's easy because we've always said the, if it's a private drive, they would replace it after the first. We, we buy it and then we just invoice them.
Right.
But this is a, kind of a different sign, so we just kinda need a standard policy in our minutes that state that, to make it easier for both of us.
You know, why don't we work on that this month and come up with a policy, maybe contact some other townships and see what they're doing and just get some ideas.
What do you want me to do in the, in the meantime with the situation we have on our hands now?
Well. You know, let me, let me say a little more about this. When, when we started putting signs up for private driveways, more than one house on the- that was when nine-one-one did the addressing throughout the county. And we did that to get people started, to get the sign up. It's a health and safety, welfare issue. Some people will never put a sign up, others put them up right away. We said as a township, we would put that first sign up. And some, some, some signs, some streets are labeled with a catchy name and so those signs tend to disappear. And we thought, well, if, if you gotta put a catchy name on your sign, it disappears, then usually come back and replace that. The township doesn't wanna be responsible for it. So that's kind of what took place. And I think that's a good policy. Now, a deaf child sign or a blind child sign or something like that, that may fall into a little different category, but we need to talk about that.
Well, I, I agree with that, though.
So, so what do I do in the meantime?
Well, I'm not just saying that, I understand that's a safety issue as well, but what's it any difference if somebody's driveway sign gets stolen and they need an EMS vehicle or something there and they can't find it? That's just, that's a safety issue just as much as, I mean, in my opinion. So I'm just saying, what, whatever we do from here on out needs to be the same.
I would tend to agree. Does, does, I thought it might be the Boroughs Association, but I, I was gonna say P S S. I thought they rec, they had recommendations of which signs should, you know, basically be required and-
For us to-
Yeah. Which ones can be optional. I can do some quick looking into it, but I'll-
Well, what would you like to do in the meantime regarding the hearing compared child signs?
Do you have any more?
No, I don't have any more. And there's another, an officer called me Saturday and asked if we put up a watch, watch, two watch children signs and cattle crossing signs and he said that he would pay for them because I was, I told him that, you know, if it's a specialty sign, you should be, you know, you're usually the one paying for it. He said that's fine, so.
It's been that way in the past.
Okay.
I've actually paid for those signs too. So that would, I think that should stay the same. For now, I guess with a deaf child sign or something like that, just go ahead and replace it until we have something in the books for it. Then when you get it the next time, that's the policy.
All right, so then the dump-
So is that a motion, that you're gonna pay for that?
Make a motion and pay for the deaf child sign, yes. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimous.
And the other signs?
And then we'll come back. Should we take, or Mike, should I put this on the agenda for next?
Yes.
Put the sign policy on the agenda for next month, okay?
Yeah.
So do some research?
I really, I saw one recently.
Okay.
Somebody has a template policy that, that does all this work for you.
So we'll put sign replacement policies back on there.
If the others have already agreed to pay for them, then I would just make one of them.
All right, well, I just wanted, I don't feel like, I mean, that's, that's fine. Just tell them what to do. That way I can make one phone call and deal with it all.
I, I think it's fair to say that this policy's going to say that a watch child sign is not something that typically municipalities pay for. As you said, a deaf- As you said, a deaf child's a different story, but I mean, if you want a sign saying look for children, you know, that's not.
Right.
That's not arguably required for anyone.
But so the other, the other signs that I was asking about that were stolen, I am to just get them and then we can invoice the, the other two were watch children's signs that the Olmish community, those watch children at the Olmish school community asked that we put up, and they said they'd be responsible for them. So I'm just to put them up and just invoice them for that.
Yes.
And the other gentleman that talked to me about the cattle crossing and watch children's signs, get them, put them up and do the same, since he agreed to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just have to make a note in our sign, in our sign, can you follow this up?
Aye. Another thing is, I myself wanted to talk to you guys about the snow fence. I know we, we went away from doing it for a while and then we started doing it again. It obviously helps, but I don't think anybody ever really kept track of it. It took us, for three guys, it took a hundred and thirteen man-hours to put it up, take it down, that's altogether, that wasn't really messing around. So with our wages, less new fence, diesel fuel and whatnot, it was almost fifty-four hundred dollars. Plus new fence, you're looking at between five and six thousand dollars to put that up. So it's great when it's there and we need it, but.
Is that to put up and take it down?
Yeah, put it up and take it down, so I just, I'll keep putting it up, I have no problem putting it up, I sleep better at night in the winter, but that's, you know, fifty-five hundred, six thousand dollars. You guys can make the decision whether we want to keep doing that or not.
Well, I think we should identify the roads, there's some roads where you really need it, other roads are.
See, we kind of put it, where we put it, we really need it.
Yeah, well.
I would agree with Doug, I think that'll be your decision, if you think you need to put it up, if not, don't worry about it, Brandon.
Well, you had talked about, the reason you had brought up snow fencing was the potential to hire a.
Yeah, we have another person, we always have people.
Have a fourth plow driver.
Help in the winter, but, I mean.
So if you don't put that snow fence up, you have funds to.
Right.
Have a park, to have a fourth person for plowing.
Well, not really, because, you know, sorry, money person. Not really, because you're not saving any money.
Right, I guess.
I mean, you're saving time that they could be doing other things, because it's just man-hour, so they're out, I mean, I'm not, not trying to be the negative, but they aren't saving any money.
Well, you also talked about the Old Greg School paid six thousand dollars for their plowing.
We have a, we have a spare truck, and this is something that I thought about, you guys can do whatever you want. But if we get, if we get a fourth person, not for, maybe not for every time, but just some of the time.